Okay, please call the meeting to order.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. De Silva?
Here.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mrs. Rigby?
Here.
And Mr. Melody.
Here.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, can I ask Mr. Valentine to please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the January tenth regular organizational meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the January eighteenth special meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Ruby?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. And now do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the January twenty-fourth regular work session? Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. And now do we have a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting this evening, February fifteenth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Now I will turn it over to Mr. Baker for the Golden Shamrock presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Melody. Good evening, everyone, members of the board and our audience. My pleasure to introduce our Golden Shamrock presentation this evening. I'd like to introduce Ed Pinaki from Monarch Financial. Ed started this program in nineteen ninety, so thirty-two years of Golden Shamrocks, and we've given out a lot of them. Our first one tonight is going to be presented by Janita Hampton, who is Assistant Principal at Dublin Jerome High School.
Good evening. I am excited to announce and celebrate our Golden Shamrock winner, Mrs. Ashley Dolan Smith. Miss Dolan Smith has been with Jerome as a science teacher for nine years now. What I would like to do first is read some of the comments that individuals made on why she received this award. Ashley introduces a passion project each year for the environmental students to consider. Four years ago, two of her students researched an immersion project to sort food from trash and turn it into renewable energy. With the support of Ashley and her ongoing push and dedication, she secured a ninety thousand dollar grant, and Jerome is the first public school in North America to house equipment to make this happen. With joint efforts from Grind to Energy, countless hours of planning and training, the once dreamed-up project is now a work in reality, and this is all due to the efforts of Ashley Dolan Smith. Ashley is a true teacher of students. She puts her kids first. She also has an entire ecosystem in her classroom. One of her students wanted to raise catfish. She empowered him to take on the challenge, and now she has tanks, catfish, and growing plants in the tanks. She also grows plants that Donna O'Connor gives to new teachers each year. To see this teacher in action is amazing, but to understand what this teacher does behind the scenes for her students and community is beyond words, and this is why Ashley Dolan Smith deserves the Golden Shamrock Award. Mrs. Dolan Smith has gone above and beyond for both of my children. Mrs. Dolan Smith wrote a glowing recommendation for my daughter, who is now a freshman at Ohio University and has been accepted to Copland Scholars in the Honors Program. But not only that, she went out of her way at a parent-teacher conference Zoom call and helped to inspire my son to turn around his behavior. My son was becoming disruptive in class, late to classes, failing classes, just did not want to do well in school or even go. Our eve appointment with her stated, started out pretty sad as she let us know that our son, while not only doing poorly in her class, was arriving late and being disruptive. She talked to us for just a few minutes, but then she got on the call with my son and spoke with him for forty-five minutes. She didn't scold him. She simply made him understand what he was doing wrong, and he understood. And then she helped him with his bio homework, which he was struggling to do. He is now the first one in and is now a leader in that class. My kids absolutely love her and will happily admit she is their favorite. Dublin is truly lucky to have her in their system. She is just the kind of teacher my son needed to help turn him around. This is just a true representation of the type of person and teacher Mrs. Dolan Smith is. She loves her students. Yesterday was Valentine's Day, and what you don't know probably about Ashley is that she makes cocoa bombs. Well, she gave every single one of her student a cocoa bomb. And so that's the type of person that she is. She also, we were doing Love Week this week at Jerome, and we said to each teacher, like, pick five or six students that you would like to, you know, receive a note from us. Well, she's like, I can't just do five or six. So she did all of her students. So that's the type of person that she is. You can find Mrs. Dolan Smith in the building late at night. She runs our after-school detention program. She stays late to, like, prepare for the next day, work in her garden outside. So if you're ever in Jerome, you can stop by to see the garden that her and her students have created out back, which is really nice, or working on her Grind to Energy project. I can go on and on with examples of what a terrific person she is and also a teacher. But this, I think this award sums it up. So help me congratulate Ms. Ashley Dolan Smith.
Thank you. This is such an honor, and I just want to thank all of you for supporting the projects that go on in my class and for supporting those students. I really enjoy teaching. I love my kids, and I wouldn't trade them for the world. So thank you.
Our second Golden Shamrock tonight will be presented by Nick Bertrams, who is an administrative intern at Chapman Elementary.
Good evening, Dr. Marshhausen, Mr. Kern, Mr. Melody, and members of the board. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present and introduce my friend and colleague Scott Ziole to receive his Golden Shamrock. I recently asked our staff to give me one word to describe Scott, and here are some of the more popular words that were recognized for Scott. Scott is a learner. He is one of a kind. Scott is supportive, charismatic, and dynamic. He is also genuine, reflective, inspirational, and optimistic. Scott is a swan. I'd like to add my own word to that list, mentor. I've been fortunate enough to work under Scott's leadership in a variety of roles at Chapman. From my very first day as a Title I math teacher to this very day as an administrative intern, I have learned something new and have grown as a person and an educator and a leader because of Scott. My experience working under Scott is not unique. Here are some testimonials from those staff members who have been fortunate enough to work with him over the years. First, Scott is a selfless, supportive, and empathetic leader and team member who always keeps his focus on what really matters. Another staff member said, Scott is always pushing us to grow but providing the support needed to make that growth happen. Additionally, Scott has the ability to sense the importance of the social and emotional well-being of both staff and students. The culture of our building has been nurtured by his ability to sense when staff members are stressed, both personally and professionally. Another staff member said, Scott always goes beyond the logistics and academics of running a school, and he thinks about how to improve the culture and the emotional wellness of its teachers and students. And finally, just recently, Scott's supervisor said, Scott is able to facilitate conversations with intention and purpose, and he always keeps the right questions on the table. In meetings, Scott contributes intelligently and thoughtfully and always with respect. Overall, his modeling of professional behavior and practice is that which should be emulated by everyone. Not only is Scott professional and purposeful, he is caring and supportive of the staff and students at Chapman. He works to ensure a positive climate in the building, and he demonstrates care for the students and families of Chapman. The Golden Shamrock is awarded to someone who has made noteworthy contributions to Dublin City Schools. As you can tell from the previous testimonials and the people in audience tonight, there is no, there is not another person more deserving of this award than Scott Ziole. The impact Scott has made on me, the staff at Chapman Elementary, and the Dublin community can be felt in the halls at Chapman. If you were to walk around our building and talk with our staff and students, you can sense that Chapman is a special place, and that is largely due to Scott's leadership. I'm so thankful to be here tonight to introduce Scott Ziole to receive his Golden Shamrock.
Swan. I knew you'd, I knew they'd come back. Good evening, Dr. Marshhausen, Mr. Kern, Mr. Melody, and members of the board. I feel incredibly honored and humbled to be receiving the Golden Shamrock. I'd like to thank the people joining me tonight, including my wife Dawn, son Ben, and daughter Stella, and of course, my work family, staff and administration, absolutely the best in the business. As you can imagine, when we enter the profession of public education, we never do so for recognition or fanfare, so being in the spotlight can feel a little overwhelming. However, as I told our staff after they surprised me the other day, it certainly has been good for the soul. As I've reflected on this award over the past couple of weeks, I kept going back to how grateful I am for the staff. It is their intentional care for the students that inspires me daily. They push me to be the best, so in turn, they can be their best. In fact, if you come to our school on any given day, you would see practitioners, experts in their craft, consistently working to create an environment centered around learning, creativity, well-being, and joy. They are truly remarkable. I also am fortunate to work in a school with tremendous parental support. This support has been particularly evident over the past two years, day in and day out. Our parents have been there for us. Whether it be with notes of appreciation, dinners at conference night, or their generosity to provide events for our students to enhance their experience, they are always willing to lend a hand. I could not ask for a more positive partnership. And finally, the students. They are our why. The fact that we get to change the trajectory of a child's life in a meaningful way is one of the highest callings. On the occasions I get the chance to visit Dublin-Siota High School, I am instantly greeted by Chapman alumni, and they say, I miss Chapman so much. I love it there. Those are the moments when you know your, when your work makes an impact. Once again, thank you for this recognition. I will remember it for a lifetime.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Dr. Marshhausen to introduce the presentations.
Thank you, and congratulations to our Golden Shamrock Award winners. Very well deserved. At this time, I would like to introduce our Director of Teaching and Learning and Curriculum, Lori Marple, to come up and introduce her team as we look at and talk about what we do to prepare students to be successful.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Marshhausen, I'm Lori Marple, and I'm the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And it is my pleasure tonight to talk with you about some of the work that we are engaged in in the Academics Department in Dublin City Schools. I have with me Kristy Venney, who is our K-12 Coordinator of Career Education, and Erin Schulteins, who is our Coordinator of Online Learning. So as you are well aware, our world is rapidly changing. And with rapid change, we are constantly thinking about our programming and how we can make it relevant for our students in a world that is constantly changing. That can be a challenge. That can be a challenge for us as adults. That can be a challenge for our families, and it can certainly be a challenge for our students to think about what the world might be like ten years from now. As we do that today, we're going to share some updates from the Ohio Department of Education, and we will also discuss some ways that we are incorporating flexibility for our students into our programming in Dublin City Schools. So before I talk about change, though, I want to share the commitments that we have to our kids from the moment they enter our doors at age around five, right? We have a commitment to instructional excellence for our kids. We want to make sure that we are serving them all of their needs and, and providing a learning environment in which they can thrive, and we do that through keeping a growth mindset. And also, and also making sure that we're committed to that, that excellence for both student learning and student experience. So in just a moment, I'm going to put a slide up here. Take a look at this graphic with me for just a minute. There's a lot on this slide. We've borrowed it from Heather McGowan. But what you're looking at is the fact that today is the slowest rate of change that will ever exist in our children's lives. Things are changing rapidly. Think about your own upbringing. Think about when the mobile phone was invented, and then think about how quickly technology is changing ever since that moment. This is pretty big. Do you see that curve? I'm a math person. That's a pretty steep curve. Our kids are living in a time of very rapid change when it comes to technology. And technology drives the workforce. Technology drives all aspects of our life right now. So as we look at this today and we think about this being the slowest it will ever be, it's becoming more normalized and expected that we'll have that change. And if we know our students are growing up in this time of rapid change, we must pause and really think about what options we have for them and how we can be flexible in making sure we're providing for them. Dublin is committed to various pathways for our students. We want a well-rounded education for our kids. And we also, you've seen, have some really special opportunities, including all of those here at Emerald Campus, our programming out at the three high schools. And so Kristy's going to share with us a little bit about ODE's four E's. And following that, Erin will highlight one of the many options that we have for kids in our virtual pathway.
Thank you, Lori. So before we dive into the four E's, we're going to look a little bit at some of the ways that our world is changing in more detail than that first slide you saw with the hockey stick of accelerated change. First, this slide represents the top skills that LinkedIn identified from a massive amount of data as being very important. And you'll notice the first column of soft skills, or we like to say employability skills, those might look familiar to you. And the second column of those hard or technical skills might not be as familiar or comfortable. Our teachers are working in real time to learn as much as they can about this quickly changing technology and the needs in our society. And what we were, next slide, please. Thank you. Another thing we're going to take a quick look at are what our grads are doing. And this is some of our graduate data from the National Student Clearing House. We have exceptional students in Dublin City Schools. You'll notice eighty-six percent of our students enter a two- or four-year college or university upon graduating high school, and sixty-six percent persist within six years. That's above the national norm, the national averages. That does leave thirty-four percent who do not earn a degree, and then one data point right now that is curious and a little bit maybe concerning even is that forty-three percent of college grads are underemployed in their first job. So that means the degree they have, they're not employed in a pathway that is the average of what that career should pay. So, next slide, please. We know that college is only one indicator of success. All of our students are ultimately preparing for a career, some kind of a career, and there are different amounts of education required for whatever career they're pursuing. This is an interesting graphic that shows the true ratio of jobs in our economy. So you'll notice for every one job that requires a master's degree or higher, there are two professional jobs requiring a university degree and seven that require a one-year certificate or a two-year degree. So this example is just a healthcare example because it's something that we're more familiar with, and if you click to the next slide, please. This is a graphic from Ohio Department of Education that maps it out a little bit more specifically, and it shows sort of what those entry points look like. So an LPN is a kind of certification that a student can get, and it shows that that's an in-demand job. That's what the little thumbs up means. And then the next additional level of education would be for becoming a registered nurse, and there's a pay bump. And then the next bump would be a nurse anesthetist. That's a tricky one to say. So, and then that's another bump. So this shows students have options for where they enter and how long they go to school for different in-demand fields. And we look at these career pathways and career data from our society right now as we plan the kinds of experiences that we provide for students. Next slide, please. Which leads us to the four E's that Lori mentioned. The Ohio Department of Education has a strategic plan, and they have something called One Goal. And that is that all students are engaged in one of four options or a combination of options upon graduation. And we're going to roll through these and briefly just explore what that looks like and what we're working on here in Dublin City Schools. Next slide. So the first one is one that more of us are probably familiar with, and that's education. And there's a lot of educators in this room. We value education. Everyone is going to continue to need education, no matter what field they go into, as those changes happen in society. We might be most familiar with the two- or four-year degree, but there are a lot of other educational options for our students upon graduation, and there is no one better than choice for them. There are lots of options based on what their ultimate goal is. Also, you'll notice on this slide, there's some things that you might not have considered when you thought of education at first. For example, you'll see up there internships or mentorships, gap years, and that's something that's been around for a long time and now is coming back into favor as students want more time to figure out who they are and to explore the world, and those are often very planned experiences. You also notice apprenticeships. The skilled trades are really needing people as more people are retiring, and this is an opportunity that students can start even while they're in high school. So a pre-apprenticeship is what they begin before an official apprenticeship upon graduation. Next slide, please. The next E is employment, and this means a first job, not the only job a young person will ever have. In fact, they're probably going to have a lot of different jobs in their lifetime, a lot more than maybe some of us in the room have had or will have. And there's a lot of reasons this could be a good choice. There are more jobs, an increasing number, that do not require a college degree as an entry point. There are even some employers that will incentivize to get a young person to join their company and pay for their education. What a great deal. That's good for a lot of people. And one of the things you'll notice on this slide is work in Dublin. What a great deal. That's good for a lot of people. And one of the things you'll notice on this slide is Work in Dublin. We have a Job Fair. It's the Work in Dublin Job, Career, and Internship Fair that our school district sponsors in partnership with the Dublin Chamber. That's happening this spring in April on the 12th, and we've made some really great changes that we hope will meet the needs of our students and our community. We are going to be having not just part-time jobs and summer jobs, but also internships and full-time jobs and career pathway type of jobs. So this is an exciting event that our students will have access to this spring. Next slide. Next E is enlistment. Military is a great place for young people to develop technical and employability skills, to discover their career interests, and there's many other benefits. Our Dublin students have the option to take the ASFAB, which is the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery, if you were wondering. And it has a career development component that comes free with that. So our students are able to take that if they wish. We are holding our first-ever Military Options Night here at Emerald Campus on April 19th, and that is going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we're going to have a presentation that helps young people understand their options, as well as panels for families and students who might be interested in learning more. Next slide. And finally, the fourth E, entrepreneurship. ODE calls this a self-sustaining vocation. I think entrepreneurship's probably a little bit easier. That's why we added the E, the fourth E. And this means, this could be the gig economy. You might have heard that term, or a side hustle if it's a part-time gig of some sort. This is becoming a more and more popular option for our young people and adults. And as our society changes, you can probably think of several different examples of this. But how we offer ways for students to learn about how they can do these options is a growing area in our district. We have an Entrepreneurship Academy. We have a new Intro to Entrepreneurship course at our high schools. We have the Dublin Business Academy. And we also have a very resource-rich community. Our Chamber is very supportive of new businesses. And then there are several other things like the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center right here in Dublin for students interested in this route. Next slide. Finally, with all of these great options, students need more opportunities to learn about themselves, their strengths, and what they love doing, and also what the world needs and what they can be paid for. Because there are so many great options, but it doesn't matter if they don't know about them. So we have two tools that we're using in the district with grades sixth through 12 right now. Sixth grade through ninth grade, or eighth grade has an option for School Links. And they have a time during the day where they do lessons that are focused on career exploration and identity and figuring out who they are and exploring. And then in high school, we continue the use of School Links, and they also have the option for Youth Science, which is an aptitude and interest-based tool that helps them explore careers in a very personalized fashion. We have also a website for career education that has these resources and many others, if any families are interested in exploring that more. Thanks.
Hello, good evening. See if I can get the clicker to work. All right, thank you. I'm Erin Schulteins, and I'm here to share some highlights with what we have going on in the virtual pathways. DCS Virtual is our K-12 online virtual options. K8 is our full-time virtual option. It allows for flexibility in the mode of learning and where the learning takes place. It is synchronous lesson, so students have the same schedule as in-person learning and have the district curriculum and rigor that aligns with in-person learning. The actual, the registration just opened up today, so we are registering for next school year for the K-8 pathway. I'd also like to really focus on high school courses right now because our high school courses support the exploration of the four E's that Kristy just shared with us. DCS Virtual was established in 2020, and before DCS Virtual came, was established, our teachers were creating virtual courses already. The courses were rigorous. They matched what was going on in person. After we were established, we just, I worked with the Coordinator of Online Course Development, Dr. Natalie Henderson, and we established some district norms for our virtual courses. That way, each course, no matter what course the student was taking, it was consistent with layout, with navigation, and really put the end user in mind as we were going through these courses. All of our courses are, well, actually, this year they were considered zero-period, so outside of the traditional school day. However, moving forward, we are going to schedule these courses in the seven-period school day. That's going to allow flexibility with the number of courses, virtual courses and in-person courses that students can register for. All of our courses count towards a student's GPA. They are facilitated by Dublin City School teachers. They're created by our teachers. And they, we have, if a student struggles, if they have a question or needs a little more support, a teacher is always an email or a Google Meet away to help support the learners. If you look up on the screen, you can take a tour of what one of the DCS virtual courses look like with the district design norms in place. There is built-in flexibility with these courses because everything is online. There is no required student-teacher interaction. So students have the, have access to these courses 24/7, and they can do the learning when it best fits their schedule. In 2020, we rolled out our first three courses. Those were the courses that were already created by our teachers. We just, we worked on the formatting to provide that consistency with our district norms. And this year, we rolled out six additional courses. We had, in 2020, we had 564 students enrolled. This year, we have 934 students enrolled in the high school virtual courses. Next year, we're really proud to roll out 16 courses, and all of those courses are listed on the screen. The development of these courses for next school year were based on junior and senior-level highly-enrolled courses. So we took a look at those courses first. The handbook is very complex. There are hundreds, over 100 courses to select to transfer into the virtual pathway. So we looked at junior and senior first, but we will trickle down into freshman and sophomore-level courses. In addition to these courses, we also offer some virtual courses over the summer. So last year, we rolled out DCS Virtual Summer Courses. This year, we do plan on doing the same. As soon as summer is finalized, we will list all of the courses on the website, as well as registration information to register for the summer courses. And at the end of every semester, we always ask for feedback from our students and our staff. So for our fall semester this year, in December, we had 459 students enrolled, and of that, 108 chose to take this optional survey. Overall, the students feel like the courses are quality. We had 91.5% of our students either agree or strongly agree that it was an overall good learning experience. And on average, 90% or above either agreed or strongly agreed that the courses were presented in manageable modules or chunks of information, was easy to navigate, increased their knowledge and skills in the subject. And it also, the students agreed that the assessments, the assignments, and the projects truly measured their knowledge of the course. So great feedback from our students for the virtual courses. For more information, or actually to register, students can work with their guidance counselor to figure out how virtual courses fit into their schedule. And we also are listed in the High School Course and Career Handbook website.
Thanks, Erin. Are there any questions for our team tonight?
Yes, I have a, I have a question. First of all, thank you for the presentation. It's always good to hear from you all. I have a question for Kristy. With the different rates of college degree, two-year and four-year, has that changed over the years now that we've had jobs that didn't even exist before? Like, are you seeing different trends?
And yes, and the pandemic's causing some changes as well. We're seeing some drops. I think there was some hesitancy. And with a lot of programs that were online, students were making different choices. We are seeing some changes. And as students learn about options with two-year degrees versus four-year degrees, those numbers are looking slightly different. It's not a humongous change yet, but the shift is there. Does that answer your question enough? I don't have any of the hard data in front of me. I don't want to quote numbers and be.
No, no, yeah, that's, that's.
There is a slight shift happening, yes.
I just had a quick question. You guys mentioned, great presentation, so thank you. You guys mentioned about the courses were not going to be, were no longer outside of the traditional school day. So how does that look if a student were to take one of the online classes versus an in-person? Can you just explain that a little bit further? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Great question. So the buildings are planning right now where the students will go during that schedule. If the students choose to stay in the building, because they do have flexibility with where they take the course. If they choose to stay in the building, it will be dependent on the school and what their plan is for the students.
Okay, great, thank you. Oh, wait, and I would also, can you take more courses then?
Our students can take a seven-period day.
Okay, so before, could they take more if it wasn't in the seven periods?
Great question. This year, we had a zero-period where students could take that course. Next year, we're shifting into that day-long view so that we're really not talking about kids loading up more and more and more, but instead thinking about flexibility within what they're taking towards graduation.
Okay, perfect. Good questions.
One more question. When does the registration for the summer?
We are working on all of that right now, and all of our summer options for students will be available for registration after spring break. Thank you.
One of my challenges to our academic team was to provide flexibility to our juniors and seniors. As we work as a business advisory council, and Mr. Melody and Mrs. Gillis are now on the BAC, there are more and more opportunities for students to have those externships and those internships. And when you look at some of our most in-demand jobs, potential partnerships with folks like Air Force One in the HVAC area, the jobs are incredibly in demand. We could have a senior who's at Sayota High School first through fourth period. They go to Air Force One and do an internship and get paid from noon until 5:00. They could then do the other two courses that they're taking virtually through us on their own time. They could do them in the evening. And we know from when students turn in online work and during times when we were all online and we broke the day up into sections, 10:00 p.m. to midnight and midnight to 2:00 a.m. were the busiest times when students were turning in work. And when you hear about the sleep cycles and the rhythms of high school kids, they're up later than old people like us. So.
Who are you calling old?
Yeah, like me. Why, we started at the top. We could have students who go to Tolls for their trades but had their online classes with Dublin teachers. And whereas Tolls may not offer AP Government, you can now take AP Government from a Dublin teacher while you were going to Tolls to learn your trade. So the reason to start with the older students, and our challenge, and Erin and Natalie have been phenomenal in saying, let's build this because the job markets that are going to be there are going to require flexibility. And this gives a student with mom and dad and a guidance counselor an opportunity to build what works for them. And the same holds true for our online K-8 courses. We have some parents who, they pay Dublin taxes, but they want their child to have an online education. They don't need to go to Odella or Ohio Virtual Academy or one of the external online providers, the Dublin City Schools, for parents who choose for their children to have an online education. The Dublin City School Districts can provide that online education thanks to amazing and talented course designers and teachers and a team that's ready to support people. And if families' needs change and they want to jump back, or if a young person can't handle the flexibility of an online course and they start to struggle, we have all the resources to pull them back, and we have all the resources to help with those transitions. So we are incredibly blessed, and I am so thankful to have the opportunity to work with this team as we make the shift to be able to meet parents' needs. And none of this is at a cost of a college preparatory education for the parents who want a traditional education. If you want to stay in any of our high schools and do the AP track, do our IB track, get a traditional college prep elite education, we still offer that. We, I sometimes say flippantly, but we mean it. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can do both of these things and do them incredibly well to serve our students and serve our community. So thank you to the three of you. So appreciate the work that you and your teams do.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and it's so nice to see the growing list of classes. I'm sure Mr. Valentine remembers, a couple of years ago, this was a board superintendent goal to kind of initiate this and launch this program. So it's nice to see that it's still around and it's growing, and hopefully the options continue to present itself. Thank you.
And I said once, it's critical that it's our teachers. Our teachers are, we perform at a different level. And for our teachers to be able to do this work with our students is critical. At this time, I would like to introduce Tyler Wolf, who is going to introduce a dear friend and former colleague of mine as we talk about a new program that we're excited to bring to support our students.
Thank you, Dr. Marshausen, and Mr. Melody and Mr. Kern, members of the board. Thanks for having us up here tonight to present about Hope Squad. And actually, two words that I've been thinking a lot about lately are the words "hope" and the words "action." And I think, you know, in my heart, I have hope for the future. And I think with all of us working together, we have action and we have strategies and things planned to help create that hope and have it come true. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the Children's Hospital Association have all issued a declaration of a national emergency in child and adolescent mental health. That was last year. Also, last year, the Surgeon General's Advisory recently made a public statement about the mental health crisis among our children, adolescents, and young adults. It's entitled "Protecting Youth Mental Health", and it outlines recommendations for communities in addressing the ever-increasing mental health needs that we're currently experiencing. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for youth ages 10 to 24. There are soaring rates of depression, anxiety, trauma, loneliness, and suicidal ideation among our youth. People of color and those in lower socioeconomic communities have been most impacted by COVID-19 and have seen the highest increases in mental health needs. Naturally, the children of these communities have experienced the associated stress. Students in Dublin are not immune. Since August of 2021, our mental health professionals have administered 168 Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scales. In January alone, 16 students were admitted to the hospital and eight were referred for assessments. In January, our school social workers and centero clinicians provided services to over 600 students who have social or emotional goals on their IEPs, their 504 plans, or their MTSS plans. Every day, I receive Bloxy Alerts. Bloxy is a software system that identifies, among other things, self-harm language sent or received on our network. We've intervened on over 60 Bloxy Alerts since October that have expressed suicidal ideation or self-harm. We're here tonight to speak about Hope Squad, and we plan to implement Hope Squad in all of our high schools, including Emerald Campus, in the fall of 2022. Our high school principals have all expressed a full commitment to the implementation of Hope Squad. Eight staff members participated in Hope Squad advisor training last week. These staff are committed to implementing the program with students to help save lives. So here to speak about Hope Squad is my new friend and colleague in this critical work, Vicki Clark, the Central Ohio Regional Director of Grant Us Hope and Hope Squad.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm so honored to be here this evening to talk about such an important topic. And I wanted to briefly go over what Hope Squad is. Hope Squad is a peer-to-peer suicide prevention program where students are nominated by their peers and exhibit characteristics such. and exhibit characteristics such as trustworthiness, display confidentiality, and are typically are the students who are often sought out by their peers in situations of depression or emotional feelings of self-harm. And so through a nomination process, which is vetted by a school team of administrators and counselors, and final decisions are made by the school team of, who will be a Hope Squad member. Typically, in the size of your high schools, there would be anywhere between 25, 35 Hope Squad members. And it's a program that Hope Squad members receive a curriculum led by Hope Squad advisors on topics such as self-care, resiliency, how to have the skills to be an active listener and know what to do when they're confronted by a situation where a peer is exhibiting or expressing self-harm and know how and who to refer those students to. So we're not asking Hope Squad members in any way to be the experts or counselors. They're really the eyes and ears of the school to be able to recognize those signs and persuade their peer or friend to get the needed, the help that is needed by going to an adult. So we have over 200 Hope Squads in the state of Ohio right now. Over 45,000 people have been trained in the Hope Squad curriculum. We are one of five ODE-approved, evidence-based programs. And what the result is, is transformational. It's changing your culture of the school building to be one of inclusive culture where belonging and safety and prevention efforts are saving lives. And the evidence shows that over 25% of the referrals going to the experts or your counselors administration are now coming from Hope Squad members. And even the bigger goal of that is that we are giving all students the skills to be able to go to an adult and feel comfortable about having what is now kind of an awkward conversation and really breaking down those walls that are often tied with the stigma that goes with mental health and wellness. So the goal of the Hope Squad, which I've highlighted already, but just again, the biggest goal is really to transform the culture and really empower youth to lead that change and where we're creating an inclusive culture and a sense of belonging and creating that safe place for students to start opening up about their feelings of self-harm or their own self-care. And so it, we, the goal is also to engage the parents in suicide prevention program and bring awareness activities, not only to the school community, but the broader community at large, and really providing that connection and sense of belonging for kids. And really, again, you know, being able to push through that awkward conversation that we, some of us find ourselves in and really building those tools to be able to refer and persuade our youth to get the help that's needed.
So just a couple of things I wanted to reinforce from what Vicki said. Our, the students that become Hope Squad members are in no way expected to be counselors, therapists, or anything like that. The students who are nominated and selected as Hope Squad members are there to help their peers get to the help that they need, to recognize them on social media, in the hallways, in whatever arena they're in. If a child is suffering, student's suffering, they know they can go to a Hope Squad member and be directed in the right direction. So this next slide, as I mentioned, we're going to implement Hope Squad in all of our high schools and Emerald Campus. This rollout is intended to start in August of '22, this coming fall. So we have a lot of time to plan, to do professional development, to get our advisors tuned up, to have planning meetings, and to make sure that everyone in the district at our high schools are on the same page and have the same expectations. And supporting the work will be our school social workers, our intervention specialists, and we have a school psychologist who's going to be on and Hope Squad advisor as well. So those are the people that are going to be involved and when and where it will be taking place. So I'll go ahead and do this slide here, Vicki. This is a reason why we want to involve students. We want to involve students because we know that students are typically the first to know about the suicide risks in their friends. And about seven out of 10 of those students or young adults have chosen not to tell an adult about it, but that their friends know. So young people are already talking about this with each other. They're already intervening with each other and they trust one another. And we want them to know that there is an avenue to approach adults and to get the help that they need. And my final slide, our final slide is just some resources, the Grant Us Hope website, the Hope Squad website, and the link to the Department of Education and the evidence-based practices there. So again, I want to thank everyone for their time tonight and just say again that in our hearts, we have hope. And with all of us, we have the action to take some steps to try to help some students. Other questions?
Tyler, thanks for the presentation. Thanks, Vicki. Heard nothing good things about Hope Squad. I've got a couple of questions that are probably more 30,000 feet up based off of some of the stats that you had gone through earlier. When you talked about numbers specifically, two of the things that I wrote down was January 16 admitted, eight referred. And then you also noted about intervention on 60 alerts. Is that?
That's right.
My numbers are correct?
That's right.
From a breakdown and clearly not asking you for exact, but how does that look, high school to middle school to elementary school?
Yeah, the majority of the hospitalizations are high school. Yes, I would say, you know, without looking, I could guess 95%.
And then what typically are we seeing as far as the middle school, elementary school? And with these sort of numbers or things that inevitably get to you?
We do have suicidal ideation that is prevalent at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We see a spike there. And we do plan to roll out Hope Squad if everything goes well. We hope to roll out Hope Squad in the middle schools in the future, probably next year at some point. So we want to plant some seeds for that, too. We do see suicidal ideation in the middle schools. We don't see as many hospitalizations in the middle schools. But sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is definitely a spike.
Thank you. And then my last thing, and I'm not sure how to best approach this, and I sat here thinking about it, and I started pulling up old superintendent's reports as well. I'm not, you clearly have some key indicators that you're looking at as we evaluate certain things that come across your desk, our principal's desk, our teacher's desk. Is there a way to include within our weekly report from Dr. Marshhausen some sort of specific update to numbers that are relative to this, such as admitted and referred assessments or alerts? I'm not sure what this specifically may be, but at least throw that out there for discussion as just a regular update that we're able to receive on what exactly is going on in the space?
Yep, I collect that data on a monthly basis. All of our school social workers, Centero clinicians provide me with data each month, and it's reported to me by the end of each month, so that would be no problem. I have all the data on suicidal ideation, all the Bloxy alerts, all the suicide screeners, all the things that we do. So I can provide that.
I can say from experience that, Mrs. Rigby, I'll let you ask your question first, then I'll go.
No problem. I may have missed this, Tyler. So when did Hope Squad, when did it first begin? And how long have you all been tracking data? That's my first question.
Well, we've been tracking data here in Dublin, you know, for quite a while. Hope Squad, I'm not sure when it originated. When did it start, Vicki?
Hope Squad was founded in Utah by Dr. Huddenall in 2004 due to the spike in suicide, teen suicides there in Utah.
And since then, there have been 45,000 people involved in Hope Squad, trained advisors and Hope Squad team members.
Okay, and then you mentioned the Bloxy Alerts. So would that be through the Chromebook? You know, if they, if they, I mean, can they add, I don't even, do they communicate with one another through a Chromebook? And I assume it's not looking beyond that.
Well, when students are using our network, we have software that can, you know, identify language, that's self-harm language. So whenever that, whenever the software, whenever the Bloxy software identifies that, then I can, I get an alert that tells who sent it and who it was sent to. And then, you know, I can react to that based on what it is. Yeah, so I get, I get those alerts every day.
And my last question is, as it relates to the students that are chosen, I think it's fascinating and I, and I hope and pray that it helps. But what about that trust factor? So they're reaching out to another student and then that student then in turn goes to Hope Squad. Is there a concern for that trust factor, then, how that, you know, student might feel?
I think typically when a student is reaching out to a Hope Squad member, they are, you know, reaching out for help of some, of some sort. The Hope Squad members are well-known in the school. You know, they're selected by their peers. They are included in monthly meetings with the advisors. So they get training on, you know, things to say to students that come to them. And so I think when a, when a student does go to a Hope Squad member, you know, their intent is, I need help. So, you know, we haven't experienced it yet, but that's in my, in my mind, how I think that it, that it works.
Thank you.
I've had experience with Hope Squads. I can tell you that in one year, we had what Children's Hospital would believe saved three lives, where students were monitoring social media sites. They were seeing snaps that their peers were doing over weekends and in the, at nighttime. And in Hilliard, the Hope Squad folks, kids were trained to call the non-emergency number at the police department. And if there was a concern that they couldn't get in touch with someone, they would do a wellness check. And they went to homes where students were in the process of trying to take their own life. And we saved a life because this is see something, say something at a different level. This is kids looking out for each other. And for those Hope Squad kids who were chosen, we also had a parent night where their parents were brought in and we talked to their parents about what we're asking your young people to do. And are you comfortable with your son or daughter being one of these Hope Squad members? And what to do to support them? Because we can't be everywhere. And as a superintendent who's had to have conversations with parents whose children have taken their own life, there's nothing worse. And when the phone rings and I look at my phone at 1:00 in the morning and it's the chief of police, you know something terrible has happened and you pray that it's not the loss of one of your children, one of your students. And this is a process by which we get more kids looking out, we get more eyes, and we support each other in a different way. And there are always going to be concerns about whose privacy and what are kids saying. But if it's the chance to save a life, we take that chance. And there was a time that Superintendent Rafe and I were on a Channel 10 special with experts on suicide. It was a time that we had lost a couple of students and there were several suicides in Olentangie at the same time. And, and we talked about, we've got to do something. And Hope Squads or something started in Cincinnati, was started by a woman who lost her son to suicide. And how Hope Squad came to Ohio is, she lost her kid and she said, I'm not, I'm going to do everything I can so nobody else has this happen. I've seen this work. And I think it's something that's really powerful when we do it. And it's something that there, there is a track record that it helps make those differences.
I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to present tonight. It's, to me, it's a privilege and I'm just an honor to help with this work. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
I would be remiss, and I made a comment when Mrs. Clark came up. Vicki and I had the opportunity to work together. She was the assistant superintendent in Hilliard for many years. Before that, she was our student services coordinator. She was our Chris Andrus. And she has a passion and a heart for this and a passion for kids and excited to have the opportunity to work with her in this role as she's moved on in her retirement and being a grandma and all of those things to, to have some time to devote to still changing the lives and keeping kids healthy. So thank you, Vicki. And also, I threw Tyler into a role this year that I'm not sure he knew what he was getting into. But we're thrilled. And again, a heart and a passion for keeping students healthy and working with families and working with parents to make sure that we're able to create the safest possible, possible environment for young people in a time that is changing rapidly, is very challenging, and we're going through a lot. So Tyler, thank you for all that you do as well. Appreciate it.
All right, once again, thank you, Tyler and Vicki, for the presentation. It was great content and we look forward to having this implemented in the schools. Now we will move on to public participation for issues on the agenda, for items on the agenda. Just a reminder for those that signed up for participation, please limit your comments to three minutes and they should be relevant to topics on the agenda. First signed up, we have Keith.
Just wanted to make a few comments tonight. I sincerely hope that the board make the decision to eliminate masking. I know I've seen a lot of correspondence there. And I hope that decision is made for the Dublin City Schools. I do believe that history and science will not reflect well on how our federal, state, and local governments have treated children, who really has been the least vulnerable group to COVID during the pandemic. And hopefully will bring clarity to this entire issue. We should ask why so many very reputable, well-known physicians were canceled or silenced during this, the last two years. People from Harvard, people from Stanford, people from Yale, people from Johns Hopkins. That we should never accept because that's truth. That's getting, that's getting a different point of view out there, but a lot of voices were silenced. The damage to the children emotionally, socially, mentally, and academically will be with them forever. Being wrong cost our children dearly. Instead of saying, I was wrong, and worked together to try and correct what happened, many doubled down because they did not want to acknowledge the damage that was being created, and it's sad. It saddens me to think that a child did not experience a prom or the first day of kindergarten, their Little League championship, the chance to hold hands with a friend, a chance to experience the love and laughter one gets from interacting with others and the lost time with grandparents. Unfortunately, a lot of joy and laughter has been taken from our children and it's very sad. I sincerely hope that the board members tonight will do the right thing and they show their willingness to compromise for the good of the children by working together. And not through the prism of identity politics, no one benefits when that happens. But focusing again on those things that can unite us, the community, and not divide us into groups, which the masking has done, race has done, sex has done, sexual orientation, religion, national, all these things are being thrown out there that are creating major divisions within our community. are being thrown out there that are creating major divisions within our community and within our schools. There's a better way. As Abraham Lincoln said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." It's true. Hopefully a lesson learned by many of the last few years is that fear can be used to control you. And that's just a fact. Let's never let that happen again. Seek the truth, demand transparency, hold our elected officials accountable at every level, federal, state, local. And let your voice be heard. Accountability includes voting, it includes funding, it includes a lot of things. But there needs to be accountability. Just, you know, as parents, we certainly held our kids accountable. I hold my grandchildren accountable. I understand that too, that the Parent Diversity Committee will start soon and the participants will-
Keith, your, your time is up. Can you please wrap up?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next we have Herb.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Herb Kirchner and I live in the city of Dublin. I understand this board is going to vote tonight on a resolution that will remove mask mandates for grades K through eight effective the start of next week. And I think with all due respect, I think it's about time. Also, my objective tonight is a little, is to make you guys feel more comfortable voting in support of that resolution. I'm sure you already know this, but a quick reminder prior to your vote. Wearing a face mask hinders the learning and development of children. Some children may never fully recover from the negative impact on their psychosocial development. Every school day that passes under the mask mandate is another day of negative impact on our children. In addition, we now know that based on data, the wearing of face masks does not necessarily stop the spread of the virus. Face mask contamination, either airborne or formite transmission, is a major downfall of wearing masks. Breathing through a contaminated mask puts the person wearing the mask and those around the person wearing the mask in jeopardy of contracting the virus. Face mask contamination impacts all types of masks, from the N95 to the cloth mask, the cheap throwaway mask. Face mask contamination is a major concern of the Boston Medical Center as depicted in their study titled "Contamination on the Outer Surface of N95 Medical Masks Used by Hospital Healthcare Workers." And as you guys may recall, face mask contamination was also a concern of the World Health Organization and United Nations Children's Fund. In March of 2020, Dr. Mike, excuse me, Mike Ryan, Executive Director of the WHO Health Emergency Program stated, and I quote, "There is no specific evidence to suggest that wearing of masks by the mass population has any potential benefit. In fact, there's some evidence to suggest the opposite and the misuse of wearing a mask properly." Unquote. The WHO and United Children's Fund recommended that masks, that the mass population should not wear masks. In hindsight, the CDC, local health officials, political leaders should have followed the WHO and United Nations Children's Fund recommendation. We can't change the past, we can only learn from it. In summary, based on the facts and science, the Dublin School Board should vote tonight to rescind the mask, the face mask mandate for Dublin schools and should keep the mandate off regardless of the number of COVID cases that arise in the future. To do otherwise and continue hurting, will continue hurting our children. And that would be a real tragedy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we have Kearney.
Hi, my name's Kearney. I'm a Dublin resident, taxpayer and parent. And I applaud the two gentlemen who spoke before me because they are a lot calmer than I am. So for nearly two years, in my opinion, the, the pre-K through eight students in Dublin City Schools have been subjected to irrational, fear-based policies regarding putting masks on their faces. The superintendent has never provided the public any scientific basis for putting masks on their faces. He has quoted the guidance of various agencies such as the CDC, Highway Department of Education, Highway Department of Public Health, Franklin County Board of Health. But even in doing so, he's just quoted their guidance. He's never quoted their, their data because they don't have any. The closest we've ever seen to, you know, looking at data or science in this form here was last month when the superintendent presented a PowerPoint slide that showed how the, the incidence of cases broke out among eight different Columbus Central High Schools. Right? And those eight districts had various policies for wearing masks, various means of enforcement, I'm sure. But regardless of those different ways of wearing masks or not wearing masks, the rates of cases were identical. As I said during last month's meeting, you could have laid those eight slides on top of each other. They looked identical. In other words, it didn't matter if they wore masks or not as far as the number of cases that we saw in those communities right here in central Ohio. It's always been about cases. I don't know why. But, you know, talking about analyzing or looking at COVID cases as the way of trying to figure out the potential harm to K through, pre-K through eight children, I mean, that'd be like if we're talking about, you know, the, the deaths of children being struck by lightning, talking about the cases of children who play outside. We don't, we don't talk like that. And the reason we don't talk like that because it's ridiculous because the risk is so small. All right? The risk is so small, the younger you are, of having serious harm come to you from COVID, much less dying from COVID. So we've never seen the data presented, you know, we, we've seen that the district is tracking, you know, what parties people go to. But I haven't seen a PowerPoint slide that shows the number of Dublin City schoolchildren who have become seriously ill from COVID or died. Does it look like this? Is it zero? I think it's zero. That's what I think. If it's not, what is the number? So given that history, given these facts, the time to change the policy is tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. That is everyone that has signed up for public participation for this evening. Now we will move on to Board of Education committees. Any reports for committee updates from board members?
We've got Policy Committee on Wednesday, so next time we'll have a report out on that.
Thank you. Any other updates? If there are none-
Am I sharing an update? DEI, or what are we calling that, Diversity Parent Committee? I don't know what we're calling exactly. I don't think we have an official title. But anyway, Diana, Mrs. Rigby and I work together to pick our participants in that program we feel excited about. So, or they have not been notified.
No, and you're kind of stealing my thunder, but I'll go ahead and add this now.
This is no longer my talk anymore. All right.
No, you're fine. But why don't you talk about the number of people who participated? And I'll talk about the rollout then in my report. The process that we went through because I thought it was pretty impressive that-
So I, I believe we had 185 approximate applicants for this committee, which is awesome. It shows the level of parent involvement in this community, which is just second to none. So I think Mrs. Gellis and I were excited about that. We had robust discussion as we talked about different people being on the committee. And I think at the end of the day, I think we came to a really good place of finding great diversity and equal representation among the three high schools. And really, I, I think it, I hope, we have, we have strong hope for the 15 members selected and strong hope for the focus of the committee, setting goals, being accountable to all of you as to what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I look forward to it.
As, as I, as it do I. I, I think there's a, a lot of hope. And I will, I, I don't know what you're presenting, but I'm excited for it.
Well, and I'd like to thank the two of you that you showed up at that meeting, having read all 185. You had notes on every essay, every answer that was submitted. The two of you asked for us to print them all out and you came with sticky notes and comments and we went through each one of them. So thanks to the both of you for your assistance and dedication to that process. Mr. Melody, one, one other thing to add here, and I need to double check to make sure I know which one of you serves on the city of Dublin, and I think that's you, Mr. Valentine. This council members who were the liaisons have asked for us to set up a meeting and to return to quarterly meetings with a board member, Mr. Kern and myself, the city manager, a couple of council members, economic development. So you'll be getting an invite to, to a meeting that the new mayor and city council has asked that those meetings be quarterly again. So we'll be setting those up.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Then I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Marshausen, for your, to continue on with your superintendent comments in your report.
Thank you. As we begin the superintendent's report, one thing that I don't have a slide on that I'd like to get the board's input on is public participation at our next meeting. I, I know that this is a work in progress for us. And there was a shared feeling that people standing and talking for three minutes with no feedback was less than productive. At the last meeting, I think it was a little uncomfortable and we asked people to bring chairs to sit here. So what our team has considered is calling the meeting to order and going across to the café, which is just on the other side of the entryway here. It's a more relaxed environment. We can just sit and have conversations. And we would ask that people submit the topics they want to discuss again, try to break down how much time would we would devote to each topic and have that conversation. Last time wasn't perfect. We strive to get better. And after we try again, then we see if this is the best way for us to move forward. If we're not comfortable with what happens on the 28th, then we'll try something else. I, we have such an active community and we have people who have voices and passions that we want to be able to engage and hear from. How we can best do that, we'll keep working on. But just interested in your thoughts and, and any concerns you have and anything that you would like us to do in preparation for that time at the next meeting.
I, I think that moving across the hall would be very productive. I think it was really awkward setup. Again, you try something, you learn from it, you try to do better. I also just, I know that some of these topics are hot and get emotions fueling. So just coming with respect and also if we could email topics, I don't know if we talked about this, like emailing topics to Doug maybe or to a general account so we could kind of know what topics are in advance. And if people had attachments or a presentation they're showing, if we could have that in advance so we could have more of a conversational-based interaction versus kind of reading documents.
We can put that request out and put a more neutral receiver of the information. So yes, we, we can make that arrangement and put communication out for people so that if someone has a document they would like the board to review in advance, that could be distributed in advance of the meeting.
Another suggestion that, that I have is, it seemed like there were a lot of people who were confused about what the process was going to be. So maybe if we could push that out in multiple formats. I know some people were confused. It could, were they allowed to come if they did not sign up? Were they allowed to speak if they did not sign up? Just some of the logistics around it. Put that out there so people know what's going on.
We'll get something out by the first of next week. That will give everybody a week to, to get ready.
And then the other thing is just clearly about setup too. So those little seats in the café, are we going to have regular seats or is it going to be at the tables with the little swivel seats?
I was kind of hoping it would just be the swivel seats and we could just kind of spread out and just talk without there being a front. That would be my hope. Some people might end up standing if we get a full house.
My question would just be on, we have 45 minutes, so we have a finite amount of time. And, you know, I know the last time we did this, there was, I think, one woman who didn't get to speak. So I'm just wondering how we best handle that, you know, is it going to be first come? You know, I know that you had asked for replies by noon, I think, of that day. So is there a way to, you know, kind of work with the numbers that we have?
The names of the people who submitted. Last time, we just kind of said, we're going to talk about this topic for this amount of time and whoever wants to talk about it can talk about it. So we'll try to keep better sense of who's actually signed up so we can make sure that those people get an opportunity to speak.
If this, if this doesn't work, I would suggest that, and you and I had previously talked about this, that we look at how superintendent coffees or some form of superintendent coffee slash board coffee is done where two of us on a rotating basis would go with you to those and be accessible as members of the board and communicate back. And again, hopefully with the ultimate ending goal being providing a little bit more of the casual dialogue than, than what we've grown accustomed to.
We'll have an opportunity in March, Mr. Valentine, to have that conversation. And one of the options is to get a space like we've had in the Dublin Public Library in their, in one of their rooms and schedule just a listening tour. And every month have me and Mr. Kern and two board members kind of rotate the two board members through and have opportunities to listen. That's what we're hoping to get here and we'll, we'll see how that works. We keep trying. So that would be our commitment to our public.
I will add that I'm open to that idea as well. I like it for one reason. Just not everyone can make it to these meetings at this time. So that gives us another opportunity to, you know, hear from maybe a different set of people.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think switching across the hall would be a little more open format instead of us behind a table and people participating out in the middle of the room here. It, it does kind of create that challenge though from a time standpoint, as Ms. Rigby said, that, you know, we, we don't want to limit people to three minutes, but at the same time, we do want to be able to find a way to circle through and let everyone be able to have their comments and voice their, their concerns or their input on the subject. So, so I'd say we, we try again and keep, keep adapting.
We'll keep trying. As, as we go through the report, I, I have a brief report to share tonight. Our young student, not young students, our students are here who made a presentation at the last board meeting. And I kind of have a counterproposal that I would like to discuss with the Board of Education. My proposal would be that we have a seat at a table here for a student representative at every board meeting. And we put a table next to Dr. Bailey and have a student sitting at the table with our directors. The student gives the student report at the podium, like our directors give their reports at, at every meeting. And they're sitting at the table as our directors are to have the opportunity for board members to ask questions and engage with the students. I don't see any executive session where you would have one of the students at executive session because we go into executive session for specific legal reasons that we're not able to discuss in public. So that would be my, my counterproposal to our students is that they sit with our directors, have the same access, get the information, I meet with them and they give our reports. And that they would be the student representative to the Board of Education. If that is something agreeable to the board, my next step would be to get with our four students who gave our proposal and their high school principals to talk about the timeline for official selection, to publicize at the high schools and find a way for that the students at the high schools and at Emerald Campus to begin the opportunity to provide feedback to those students. Will was with us today at Student Advisory where we had a great conversation about what does a high school of 2,400 look like and what would four high schools look like. And as we showed our students the growth projections that we've been showing at all of our groups. And as always, our students provided incredibly valuable and thoughtful insight that helped shape and advise the conversations that we have. And I think it would be incredibly valuable for them to report back to us and to have the opportunity to participate in our Board of Education meetings. Does the board have any thoughts, objections, concerns or suggestions?
So when they are at the meeting, they would be sitting with the cabinet members?
They would be sitting with the cabinet members, yes. And they would have the agenda ahead of time. I would meet with the student representative once a month to review the agenda. That would give them the opportunity to do, I, I think, just about everything that they wanted to do in their presentation.
I'm supportive of this. I think one of the things that I just, if I have concern is making sure that we set this up in a way, and it's heavily dependent upon the students as well, that this is something that has passion from the organization and not necessarily just from a set group of students so that it has life to it and it isn't just a flash in the pan. So I think that that's something that's really important. I clearly, having got elected at the age of 19, I can understand the perspective that they bring to the table and I value it. And I look forward to hearing more from them, but I just want to make sure that we are supporting them and creating this for the long term, not just the short term.
And, and there might be a natural connection between you and them as we have these conversations. So you could help recruit, Mr. Valentine.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it as well. I would just be interested to, you know, know some of these other details like how, how they would be chosen and how they will go about getting information from students that they will use for their reports and that kind of thing.
Well, as I said, my next conversation is to drag them from the third floor to the fourth floor and have a conversation with them about what the next steps are and get the principals together and iron this out. I believe their timeline was they wanted a seat at the table by April or May. And we've got four incredibly motivated, talented young people who want to help get this off the ground. So we'll, we'll put them to work too. Will's also planning dodgeball, so he's got to take care of that first. Okay.
I, I think it's a great idea to, to keep this going. I love hearing from the students. We don't, we don't hear firsthand from them enough, so it's a great opportunity.
Mr. Baker can attest to the fact that when we get on a topic with Student Advisory, it's refreshing because the perspectives that they give are, they're in it, they're living it, they're doing it every day. And it's a great balance for us and I think it will be a great addition to the board to, to hear their thoughts and conversations. Whoops, I almost passed over what Mrs. Gillis was looking for. Can you back me up? Thanks, Eric. Current Diversity Committee. We're looking at that first meeting being at the last week of February, the first week early March. The 15 individuals have been selected. And what we talked about as being the critical point first is agreeing on what the key terms mean. As we talk about what, what is equity, what is equality, what is inclusivity? Right now, I don't think we're always talking from the same definitions. And can we get together as a group and I think a moderated facilitated discussion to talk about, are we talking about the same words meaning the same things in, in the conversations that we're having? And can we agree on the terms that we're going to use? Because if we're coming at this from different places and have different understandings of the vocabulary, it makes it incredibly difficult to reach consensus. So we're looking at a moderated discussion. The letters will go out as soon as we have the date for that first meeting. First key objective is I would anticipate this group meeting three or four times this spring. And in advance of the board starting the strategic plan and strategic vision process, to have this group provide some recommendations to the board in terms of what, what would be in a strategic plan. Mr. Barnes provided a resolution that has several key points that we should be discussing. We've got, received another resolution from another community member that had some amendments to that. That should be part of our conversations. And I've always been a believer in it, it's not about the resolution, it's about what you do. And is there things that we need to talk about doing and putting in our strategic plan and putting in our vision that, that allows us to define who we are as a school district that has broad community support? So my hope is with our team and with Mrs. Rigby and Mrs. Gillis on the team, that we can create a widely supported direction that we can move as a school district that can be part of our vision for where we want to see ourselves in 2035. So I, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get to that, that point. We've continued our redistricting conversations. I'd like to thank Mrs. Schwanke and Mr. Gill and Mr. Stark and Mr. Baker and our Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies. We've met with the group of parents from, from Dogwood at Jerome Village. I, I, we all understand their frustration and sometimes anger. And moving kids from an elementary that you've been at for a couple of years into another elementary, it's, it's really difficult. And if we didn't have to do it, we wouldn't be doing it. One of the questions came up is how many students that go to DEP elementary don't live in Jerome Village? Out of 720 students who go to DEP, only 21 don't live in Jerome Village. And those are largely one-off farms, five, the five acre houses that you see as you drive on some of those streets that are just next to DEP and next to Eversol. It's largely a Jerome Village Elementary and largely a Jerome Village Middle School. We met today with Brian Ellis, the CEO of Nationwide Realty, to talk about other options for future sites in the Northwest quadrant of the district to deal with growing enrollment. We have met with Nationwide Realty with their Community Relations Person three times since we started this redistricting plan. Nationwide is very well aware of the concerns that residents have in Jerome Village and very much aware of the 9.5 mil assessment that goes to their Community Development Authority. That assessment and those 9.5 mils are completely unrelated to how we operate as a school district. And right now, as I said, 21 out of over 700 kids are in Jerome Village and there are going to be another 185 kids from Jerome Village by the time we start next school year. There's just no seats at DEP. We have seats in the district and we are compelled to make sure that every kid who goes to school has a seat, that there's room in the cafeteria, that there are teachers and those types of things. So we will continue this conversation. As several of you were on different groups that we had, from PTO presidents to key communicators, as we've had the conversations, we're starting to talk about what does a master facility plan look like in advance of 2024? And, and where do we want schools and what do we want to do with a growing population that is imbalanced with where our school buildings happen to be right now? So that's all part of what's coming. And then finally, there's a recommendation on the board agenda. It was referenced several times this evening. The recommendation on the board agenda is a resolution that would require masks in pre-K through eight through the end of the instructional day on the 20, on the 18th. If the resolution does not receive a second or is not passed, those requirements per the earlier resolution, the mask requirements would expire on March 7th. The reason that our administrative team is asking to wait till next Monday versus just immediately lift the mask requirement today is there are going to be parents, and in some buildings, I believe a majority of parents who will still ask that their children remain masked. And in those buildings, those parents have every right to communicate with their teachers. And we have the obligation to hear those parents' wishes so that we can ensure that we're working with those families to make sure that parent choice, regardless of that choice regarding masks, is honored. And in our elementary schools, our principals and teachers will communicate with parents. And if a second grade parent, if a parent of a second grader would like their second grader to continue to wear a mask, we will do our level best to make sure that that parent's wishes are granted. And just as we had a mask exemption form for parents who were passionate that they did not want their child to wear a mask since the first day of school, we have to have a process to make sure that a parent who wants their child to be masked can also communicate that and work with their teachers for that. So the reason we are asking for a couple of days from the board is Friday is a teacher work day. Monday, we celebrate President's Day. This would allow our team and our teachers to communicate with parents to make sure that we were hearing parent wishes and, and able to work with them to ensure that, that partnership continues. I'll take any questions from board members.
Dr. Marshausen, as it relates to the resolution and this potential change, obviously I brought this possibility to you probably a week and a half, two weeks ago. And I'd like to thank you and the administrative team for your thoughtfulness and the approach. At some point, this moment or decision is going to be upon us. And Scott, you and I, having gone through the journey of this over the past two years, it has been filled with many ups and downs, many difficult decisions. Some decisions that we have been right about, I think, and some decisions that we look back and think maybe we were a little bit too cautious, but cautious with good intent. As we have this discussion amongst the five of us this evening, the one thing that I'd like to ask of members of the public is allow us to have that discussion with respect for one another without cheers and jeers and, and outside noise. I think that unfortunately that's become a little bit too common as we've tried to have dialogue amongst the five of us. And there's great respect, I think, between all of us as we sit up here and talk about this tonight. As we were reflecting, I know there's only two weeks, but the question is why abbreviate this process? Why make that change now? And I, I think that no matter when that change is made, that question's going to continue to be asked. There's going to be people who have reasons to hold off. Numbers will fluctuate. We'll continue to, to deal with all that comes with handling a virus in, in our community. I would like to take a moment, and Dr. Marshausen, where are we right now in terms of numbers with students and staff that are active cases?
Just as, as a point of reference, Mr. Valentine, we are currently at 44 students and staff as of right now on our dashboard, or as the numbers I looked when we came down for the meeting. 44 students and staff right now are in that five-day COVID period. When we came back in January, that number was 652. The lowest that number was in September and October was 50 and it climbed quickly through October. So we are at the lowest point now in terms of active cases in the school district that we've been since the start of the school year. And that's according to our data that we have right now.
Thank you. The City of Dublin still doesn't have a mandate inside their buildings.
It does not. And the Columbus mandate does not apply to schools.
And the Diocese just had a change, which impacts St. Brigid here within Dublin as well. So they no longer have a mandate. It's optional as well for them. We obviously have surrounding districts that have either changed or are going to change, which isn't a reason for us to make a decision one way or another, but I do think it speaks to the situation that we're in. We're, in my opinion, need to continue to take this seriously, but we're not in a state of emergency like we once were. And we know a heck of a lot more than we did in the past. I think amongst the five of us, as we take a step back and look at the situation, it's my belief, belief that we're at a point where I truly think that we need to put this back in the hand of parents to make decisions that are best for their, their children. We all, when we got elected, and especially Scott, you and I, and Lynn and Rick and Stu, I don't think we ever could have imagined having to make the decisions that we made when we made them. You never think that you're going to have to make decisions that so greatly can impact a, a student's health in non-traditional ways, such as what we dealt with this. But I, I really believe that we're at a point where as a board, we need to have a more limited role and what our input is on somebody else's child's health. And that decision's going to have to come at some point. And I believe it should be now. In conversations with one of the fellow board members, I, that person, I'm not going to say the name, they, they said something that has stuck with me. And that was, as we reflect on where we are right now, knowing that it's just pre-K through eight, and you look out at society and everything going on. And, and it does not discount what COVID has done to families one bit or the seriousness of, of what's occurred. But I think you ultimately, this person said, how can we continue to ask these young children to do things that we as adults are doing ourselves? As we make our decisions tonight and vote on this, I hope that that's something that we can all reflect on. Leave my comments there.
Dr. Marshausen, I have, I have a question about the, the communication that you mentioned. Is for parents to let teachers know what they want their student to do? Is that going to be like just an informal conversation? Or is that, is that going to be a form, you know, similar to what we have now? Or can you say a little bit more about what needs to take place?
I don't anticipate that being a Google form like we have now. I anticipate that being informal conversations and connections with teachers, especially at the elementary school. For parents in grades six, seven and eight, you're going to have to have conversations with your own children. There's not a practical way, just like there hasn't been a practical way at the high school, for seven or eight teachers to be watching seven or eight classes worth of students to make sure that Johnny and Kim and Sarah are all wearing their masks. So we're really talking about elementary school. And our elementary school teachers at this point know their students, they know their parents. They're able to communicate with them. And if a parent would like their child to be wearing a mask, we'll work with principals to make sure. Every building's going to be a little bit different. We probably could right now at several elementaries say masks are off tomorrow and it wouldn't be a big deal. We have a couple more elementaries where I would anticipate we'd still have 60 to 70% of the students masked middle of next week. So I trust our principals. And when we have these conversations, guys like Scott Ziole and I and our team talk about, okay, Scott, how would you handle this if this happens? So depending on the board action tonight, we will get our elementary principals together and we'll talk about what do they need from us and what do they need to ask of their teachers? We'll get with Mrs. O'Connor to say this is what we're going to ask of our teachers and is this something that we're all okay with? And we'll go from there. We know from experience, if there's a squirrely third grader who the teacher's saying every four minutes, mask up, mask up, mask up, it's probably the same squirrely third grader that the teacher talks to mom or dad on a frequent basis anyway. So we'll say. So we'll say, you know, you've asked for your child to keep their mask on, we're struggling with this right now. I trust our teachers and our principals to have those conversations.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to echo some of the comments that were made from public participation, some of the comments that we've made tonight. You know, to me, at this point, I think we have to ask ourselves the question, where are we now with this virus? Because it's a very different picture than it was two-plus years ago. And so, you know, to me, where we are now, we've seen data globally, nationally, city to city, we've seen it within our own district, and I just don't think there's any evidence at all, when you look at our, within our district, that masks are effective in controlling the spread of this virus for kids. So then the next question to me becomes, what is the cost? Are we harming our children? And I truly believe that we are. I've had so many emails, so many discussions with parents, community members, with teachers. There is a learning disadvantage, there is a social disadvantage, there is a being a kid disadvantage. And these are our K through eight children. So when you talk about harm, you know, when you look at an 18-year-old, two years is significant in the life of an 18-year-old. Two years is tragic to me in the life of an eight-year-old, that we have done what we have done to these kids. I think we've made some missteps. And when we talk about protecting the vulnerable, like we did at the beginning, the vulnerable were the elderly, you know, they were immunocompromised. To me, the vulnerable now are our kids. And I think we need to make the right decision tonight to have it be a parent choice. We're not saying to remove them from everyone, but have it be a parent choice, have parents make the decisions that they feel are best for their family, for their children, and let these kids get back to being kids. I think it's, I think it's time.
So a couple of questions regarding, I guess, number one, busing. Masks would still be required on buses per CDC and TSA?
Yes, as of right now, the federal guidance runs through, I believe it's March 18th, which school buses are under the same jurisdiction as airplanes and mass transit and transportation. So as of right now, that would stay in place until March 18th. If the feds do not reissue that executive order, then we would have, we would have the flexibility to remove them on buses or make them permitted on buses. If the, if President Biden extends that executive order past February 18th, we will have to follow that executive order.
March 18th.
March 18th, sorry.
Then the other question I have is contact tracing within the classroom. So if everyone does not have a mask on and there is a positive case within the classroom, what happens?
Right now, it's just notification in the classroom.
So if someone is positive in the classroom, would the entire classroom then have to wear a mask for the next five days?
No.
After this?
No, that's not what we're doing now. So it's, you get notified. We're following the order that you notify in the class, and that's all that we're doing right now, even in the classes with students where there are mask exemptions.
How is, if your kid is sick and goes home with a stomach ache, are we making them come back to school with COVID tests, negative tests? Like, where are we with that?
I'm looking at Mr. Andres and he's got a microphone, so that's, that's new, Chris.
That is new, by popular demand. It's here. Right now, we're still following the Franklin County Public Health Nationwide Children's Algorithm. And at this point, it was revised when we went from 10 days down to five, and it does state, if you have one of the symptoms on the list, a negative COVID test is required to return or stay home for five days.
I am not a health expert. I think that this is bigger than masking or science or data or anything. I think I did not imagine myself or my family or any of our 17,000 students being where we are today after a two-year, really hard journey. What I'm thinking about right at this moment is trust. We're a new board. It feels like we just had a meeting yesterday on a resolution. I think it was just only a month ago, though. With saying that March 7th was the way to go, I mean, we kind of were the first school district to put our hat out there to announce a date, and we did so very blindly, not knowing what could occur or not occur. It was a guess, and I believe that we also kind of guessed based upon it was three weeks after the last vaccination clinic. Things change every day. So I do think that it is appropriate that we are having this conversation today because when we made our decisions in January, we were in the middle of hundreds of students being out and sick. I would like to ask, maybe I'm, I don't know what the word is. I think there's, needs to be some kind of form or something. I think we owe that to parents. I think there needs to be some kind of process on communication, which is why I believe absolutely there needs to not just be an immediate removal. I think we need to have enough time to make sure that every single parent and principal and everyone involved in the schools is aware of what the plan is and when it's going to affect and how it's going to be enforced or not enforced. I think that we are also at a time where we need to acknowledge, especially our K through five, a lot of these kids have not been in school. As I would say, I guess, a normal child, they've never eaten lunch next to another student before. And I think that we need to have some empathy for those families and for our families who are going through COVID, have lost a loved one to COVID, who are having long-term COVID effects. I don't think any of that goes away. Like I said, I'm not here, I'm not a mental health expert, I'm not a health, I'm not in the health field. I think this is definitely something that we're talking about because it's been two years, our numbers are lower. What is a sustainable plan?
Just to clarify, Dr. Marshhausen, Lindsay mentioned lunches there. This is just mask changing right now, correct? We're not, there aren't plans tonight to like change up the lunch situation and the other mitigation strategies?
Lunches at the middle schools are traditional, normal now, six through eight. In our elementary schools, for the most part, students are back in the cafeterias. In some of our cafes, some of our places, we may have desks in hallways to provide additional space. As numbers have decreased, we've started removing some of those desks. We're not going to change the schedules back in our elementary schools. Right now, the way the schedules are built, they give a little bit more flexibility to the students, and the rooms aren't as crowded. We've spread out lunches as much as we could. We're not going to redo the schedules through the remainder of the school year. But in terms of how lunches operate, as the numbers decrease, we bring people in. The only restriction that's been put on me, a superintendent, in terms of the mitigation strategies, was when the board passed a resolution that says masks will be mandatory K to eight through March 7th. So, you know, we made significant increases in our air filtration systems in all of our buildings as we've gone through COVID and gotten better. We're going to leave the MERV 13 and 14 filters in our air filtration systems. It's always been a good idea for kids to wash their hands. We will continue to encourage hand washing and have sanitation stations around for kids to use the hand sanitizers. Do we hope to get the desks out of the hallway in some of our smaller elementary so the kids can sit at tables and eat lunch together? Yeah, that's where we're going, but that's not a rapid thing. In fact, one of the comments from our elementary principal group was, as we ease back into lunch changes, they want to see how many kids are not wearing masks. It may be a different situation at Eli Penny than it would be at Old Sawmill or Daniel Wright. It just depends on what, how many kids are wearing masks, how many parents want kids to wear masks, and what are we able to do? So that's where I think the culture and the trust of the principals and the teachers and the conversations, in large part, that will happen potentially on Friday, as that's a workday, as it gives those building staffs opportunities to talk about what's best at Scottish Corner. And I know that Lauren and her team will make decisions that are best for Scottish.
I agree, Dr. Marshhausen. It would be very productive and the right thing to do if they could do this at a building level. Nobody knows their buildings better than the principals do. And so I think working with guiding counselors and staff in each individual building.
I was going to say, Mr. Baker has a statement that will be ready to be sent if there is a change, that we will communicate either tonight or tomorrow. And then the specific building level information will come from your child's building principal and/or teacher.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on what Ms. Gillis was talking about, about the March 7th date that was originally passed about a month ago. When we passed that resolution, we had really two main goals at that time. Number one was our hopes to reduce the spread and the numbers within the district. And as the update tonight presents, we've done a great job and those numbers are way down. The other factor in that date when we decided on that was allowing time for vaccinations. We had clinics throughout the schools in February here, and that has not changed, to allow that two to three weeks for them to be fully vaccinated and to have them fully vaccinated against COVID. So that's why I am a proponent of keeping the March 7th date as it is, just to allow the time for those vaccinations to kick in. Because I know there are students, as we speak, you know, just this week, that are getting vaccinated, so they need more time. If we're changing the date on them, they need more time to ensure that vaccination is fully in effect.
Mr. Melody, I'm going to bring a point of order here. We've had this conversation, which is fine in my report, but we still, it's probably time that I say I've wrapped up my report, if anybody has any questions, and then we can kick it over to the resolution on the table without objection from you.
Yep, I fully agree. So on that, I will read the resolution as it is presented. We can have a motion in a second, and then we can open it up again for any final comments from the board and then have a vote. All right, so the resolution declaring COVID mitigation and safety protocols effective February 15th, 2022, for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year. Whereas the Dublin City Schools Board of Education adopted a resolution January 18th, 2022, setting forth COVID-19 mitigation and safety protocols to continue through March 7th, 2022, or as otherwise modified or extended by the board or superintendent. Whereas the board seeks to modify the resolution to reflect the ongoing review or current COVID-19 data and student educational and social emotional well-being considerations. Now, therefore, be resolved that the following mitigation safety protocols shall apply through the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year. Students engaged in grades PK through eight are required to wear a mask in school buildings during the instructional day through February 18th, 2022, subject to exemptions set forth by the board policy. Exemptions requests may be submitted at any time when masks are required. All passengers and drivers are required to wear masks while on school transportation subject to the exclusions and exemptions in the CDC's January 29th, 2021 order. Free-at-home rapid tests will be provided to individuals identified by the district for administration at home by the parent or guardian or employees, as long as these kits are available. To the extent available, high-quality masks and respirators will be made available to staff, students, and visitors during the school day and school events at no cost to the individual. The district will consider to, will continue to work with community partners to provide onsite vaccination clinics for students, staff, and school community as needed. Parents and guardians will continue to receive notification of COVID cases as required by the Ohio Department of Health orders. Be it further resolved that the superintendent maintains authority in implementing further safety and mitigation protocols, as may be determined necessary, but shall not remove or limit the safety mitigation protocols as set forth in this resolution without the authority of the board. Be it further resolved that no person shall be subject to discipline, harassment, or mistreatment for choosing to voluntarily wear a mask or for not wearing a mask, where such use is either not required or expected. Exceptions reply. Be it further resolved that the board directs the superintendent to implement the actions set forth in this resolution to provide clear direction to the district staff on appropriate implementation and update to the community regarding the same. So that is the motion as read. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Mr. Melody, before we vote, I just want to publicly thank you for putting this on the agenda this evening. Obviously, you've spoken to your position. It's, would have been an easy thing to push back or take a stance that didn't allow this for public discussion, but I'm appreciative of you putting it on.
Thank you. So we do have a motion in a second for the resolution that was just stated. So any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a comment. I don't think it's unreasonable to have this on at this moment, but I also do agree with the statement that you made about, and you also, the statement about trust and giving the reason why March 7th was chosen in the first place and the fact that some people may have been planning on having their vaccinations up to date by that March 7th date, I think, you know, is a consideration.
Okay, if there are no further comments, Mr. Kern, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
No.
Mrs. Gillis? Mr. Melody?
No. Okay, the resolution passes by a vote of three to two. Okay, Mr. Kern, you can have your treasure updates when you're ready.
Yes, just a few things on the agenda this evening. We do have approval of the January 31st financial report. As you can see, we're on target this year, at this point in the year. We, as we continue to, as you know, we're locally funded through, primarily through real estate taxes on both our residential and commercial properties. We did get note this week, as we begin advances as people's taxes were due and able to collect some of that money, a final settlement in Franklin County will not occur until March 25th. So, and hopefully by that time or shortly thereafter, Delaware and Union. So maybe a little later than we're used to. Typically, they would settle by the end of February, Franklin County. I know they got their bills out a couple of weeks later than they wanted to, too. So to kind of just keep tracking the monitor, as that is our main, 80% of our revenue source as we go through for operating funds. So we'll continue to look at that. Donations this evening, we do have several. We're always appreciative to it. We have from Ross Stars to Riverside Elementary for the purchase of books, from First Book, to from the Stephen Romanelle Memorial Scholarship Fund, to Grisel Middle School and Jerome High School for Classroom Activities, and a donation from Ever Solom PTO to the middle school there to support teaching, teacher-staff grants. the middle school there to support teacher-staff grants. So we're always appreciative of those. And then on stuff not on the agenda, last week, we wrapped up our bond sale, which will close in March. As you know, that went very well. We are AAA rated from S&amp;P, which used to be formerly Standard and Poor's. So they have confidence in us and our ability to pay back, but also, I talk about it as a measure of accountability and one of the things we always strive for, and at the end of the day, it leads to lower borrowing costs when it costs to interest costs. So very happy with that. So that'll allow us to, there again, do the 60,000, approximately 6,000 square foot addition in Jerome High School, the envelope and window project or exterior project at Kaufman, and further work throughout the district, and of course, over at Scioto, I know we're doing some commons expansion and different other things. So that's my report this evening. Any questions?
Okay. So it is recommended by the treasurer that the Board of Education approve Item 7B, the January 31st, 2022 financial report, and Item 7C, the approval of the donations as listed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody?
Yes, motion passes, five to zero. Okay, the Department, sorry, here, Department of Academics and Student Learning?
No reports tonight. We heard them all in the beginning. No other further reports this evening. Mr. Stark?
Good evening, Dr. Marshausen, Mr. Kern, members of the board. I have one item for your approval tonight, and that is we are recommending CTL Engineering as the firm to provide design services to perform building assessments at all of our district's secondary schools built prior to 2021. These building assessments, we do them every five to six years. It's a little over that right now. It is, CTL Engineering has a number of certified engineers on their staff, electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, structural engineers, so on and so forth, and it is like a six-to-seventh month process, and they literally go through every building, every piece of infrastructure, and write up a very, very comprehensive report that photos, narratives, estimate pricing, and priority. And we use these reports as the basis on how to spend our permanent improvement dollars. Our plan is to have the secondary schools done this year and the elementary schools done next year, and we got CTL through a request for qualifications process, and that is the code-required way to get this, and their cost for this project is $150,000, and that is what we're recommending for tonight. If there are any questions?
I just have one. Did you receive other bids in this process?
It's a great question. Yeah, we had a number. So how the RFQ works is we get a bunch of qualifications in and we rank them, and then you go to the first one, and the qualifications have nothing to do with cost. Right now, it's just qualifications. Once you go to the first one, you can negotiate with them, and if you don't like their price, you go to the second one. You can't go back to the first one. This is just legally how it works. If you don't like the first one, you go to the second one. If you don't like the second one, you can either go to the third one, or you can start the RFQ process over again. CTL was actually ranked second. The first person we went to, they had a cost close to around $200,000. We felt it was too high, and that's why we went to the second choice, which was CTL, and their price was more acceptable to us, especially with their proposal and their folks that they had working on it. So it is a competitive process, and that's how it's built.
Okay, no further questions? No. So Item 10A is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution awarding CTL Engineering as a firm to provide design services to perform building assessments to all of the district's secondary buildings prior to 2021. Should I say 2022?
It's either or, but all that means is that Eversol will not be included in the assessments, all the middle schools, Emerald Campus, and all the high schools, but Eversol will not be included.
I got you. Thanks for the clarification. All right, so we have a motion to approve CTL Engineering?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody?
Yes, motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Dr. Marshausen. Mr. Kern, Mr. Melody, members of the board. Start tonight with the certified agenda for human resources. The first thing that you'll see on there is a salary change for an administrator. It's a correction that we have on tonight's agenda, followed by you'll see five retirements and five resignations. We're moving into that time of year where we're starting to see teachers making a decision to retire or not return next year, but on the agenda tonight, there are five retirements, and I'll just quickly list those. Jen Keating will be retiring with 34 years in Dublin from Carr Middle School. Elaine Reiser will be retiring with 26 years in Dublin from Davis Middle School. Kristi Barber will have 25 years in Dublin from Kaufman High School in Emerald Campus. Shelley Castella will be retiring with 18 years from Scioto High School, and then Bonnie Gamarra will be retiring with 17 years from Scioto High School. We also have one more substitute nurse on the board agenda, which we had several last time, and this is one additional. There are two unpaid leave of absences on the agenda, and then there are several supplemental and pupil activity supervisor contract hires on for your approval, and then lastly, one district athletic event worker. Moving on to our classified agenda, you will find nine resignations on the agenda. We're welcoming seven new employees to our classified area, and then we have eight salary changes on the agenda as well. The last section for stipends, there are four stipends on. One of these is a revision to a previously approved stipend for Davis Middle School, Washington DC trip. There's another stipend on for the DC trip from Eversol Run Middle School, and then the final two are for peer collaboration at Kaufman High School, and then the final one is for a school bus driver becoming certified as an OBI, which stands for onboard instructor. And that concludes the HR items tonight. Any questions for me?
I have just a quick question. With the peer collaboration, can you just explain what that is? Is that teachers working with students? I guess, how are they working with students?
I can speak a little bit to that. It varies in every building, but the peer collaboration model is one in which students with significant special needs are paired with peers, and peers are trained. Actually, you should be speaking to this. I wanted to use my mic. So they're trained for how best to support these students, and then in a lot of ways, it builds upon itself because there's the students that are trained to be the peer models, but then they, just by modeling and action, train other peers. And so the intent is to have a school-wide culture of inclusiveness, and so students with our most profound disabilities are seen as typical students in the environment. It takes an enormous amount of work. I say that because I've done it. You have to find the peers, kind of train their parents a little bit for what this is, and then train the students, and then continue. It's constant diligence to keep the work going. Anything you'd like to add to your department?
That was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve Items 12A, the personnel action items for certified, 12B, personnel action items for classified, and 12C, the stipend request. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody?
Yes, motion passes, five to zero. Office of Public Information, Mr. Baker, I see you've already sent the email communicating the resolution, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Technology's wonderful. Good evening again, everybody. Just a couple of FYIs from the Communications Department tonight. On March 2nd, all juniors will take the ACT. Freshmen and sophomores will have a normal schedule, and seniors will have asynchronous learning opportunities. So just an FYI for those students and their parents, and we'll continue to communicate that out as we get closer to March 2nd. Perk has a program coming up on February 24th called How to Keep Our Kids Safe, 9:30 a.m. and 7 p.m. at the Dublin Rec Center. Dr. Marshausen mentioned his student advisory committee. We met today. They have picked Honor Flight as this year's dodgeball recipient. That event is May 13th. It's going to look a little different this year. It's going to be outside, never done that before. So Kaufman Stadium, more details to come, but please save that date. We were proud to celebrate school counselors all week last week. Want to give a shout out to Tanya Uwer to my department, who did all the tweeting and put those graphics together to give our counselors some well-deserved recognition during that week. A couple of new videos coming, one on the Aviation Academy down at Don Scott. Eric's been working with some of the, some students that are in our Digital Media Academy here at Emerald Campus, and so they come up to the fourth floor a few times a week and have been working on videos with us, and that's pretty exciting. So their first piece of work's coming out very soon. Again, Eric's been hard at work on a promotional video for the virtual Dublin Lit Conference, which is February 26th. And finally, I'd just like to thank the new board members for sitting down with Dr. Marshausen for the podcast. We appreciate that. So those have started to roll out. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional items for board discussion or future agenda items that we would like to have added? With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, five to zero. The meeting is adjourned.